Workshop session in order.
You can hear me, right?
Yeah.
First off, we wanted to come and want to thank you for the support that you've offered for the Five Points Down to the Years. You know, we're all in this together about trying to help the citizens of our communities. And we do sincerely want to say thank you first and foremost for the help that you have provided to us thus far in our existence. But we also wanted to give you a little bit of update about what's happening at Five Points because there is honestly days that we stand back and it funnels us at what all is happening. So one of the things that we have done and is another thing to help us with is our Pigeon Polluter Soup Program, which is going very well and has now extended into the Sycamore Valley. We're going to be meeting, pulling over to Sycamore Valley Center and doing a stretch in there as well. We'll also be going out to the library here. We have connection to see about one is an instructor to the Sycamore community as well. And we have partnered with some, with Atlanta Sky out of Funkham County regionally about getting some additional funds into the communities around us to be able to continue that work and then spread it out. We also, as you know, about three years ago began working with what's called the Healthy Opportunities Program, which is part of the Medicaid expansion program. And it has opened up a whole new world of things that we are able to do and offer to people in the community. And that is what has the main thing that has brought us here tonight is we have worked with people and we do everything from providing food to being able to go in and inspect people's homes and then try to schedule and do home repairs. So we have been in and out of some places that are downright scary. Damn right scary to know that our people live in. And we, we are so frustrated. We, we spend thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars in groceries every month that would probably stagger you. And we're having to travel out of county to spend that money. And that here is hazing. And we wanted to share with you number one, the amount of money that's actually leaving our county that could be benefiting our community if we can come together and figure out some way to do something about getting a grocery store source here of some sort. It didn't have to be huge, but also to see if there is anything that we could call about as far as partnering together about home repairs. A lot of times unfortunately, the funds that we do have and that we are able to use to go in and fix people's homes is, as my mother would say, it's like trying to make a silver purse from a pig's shell. And it just bandages over gaping wounds. And it's, it's a sad state of affairs as we speak. It's really going to be. So we wanted to talk to you about that. And then we also wanted to talk to you, we, we recognize as, as community members and as tax payers, the difficult situation that the commissioners have to find themselves in trying to juggle all the expenses and all the things that you try to do for this community. And we understand that. We understand that because in some ways we do that on a little smaller scale than what you do it, but we understand that. And we know that you have been very generous to us and you've been generous to other people as well. And we were wondering if there would be a possibility that we might be creative as far as talking about ways that you could see government to support your nonprofits and other efforts in the community through doing something that I guess is kind of like a cost care program where we give county employees opportunity to have automatic withdrawal from their paycheck every time they have, get a paycheck and then go to substance use or it goes to feed the hungry or it goes to housing or it goes to that. Give them three options and then have that money that will go to help support those others that are out here doing the kind of work we do without having to draw from your annual budget. We appreciate that you do that, but once again, we realize that you need your funds. We know that you've got a lot going on right now that's got to be decided and things that have to take care of. So if there's some way that we can partner together and be creative and what we might could do, we would like to see if that's a possibility. I'm front mister, she's going to kind of just give you a rundown of what we're looking at about what's coming into, could be coming into this community rather than going to another county and what we spend and what we have brought to this community in the manners of employment and things of that nature, just in all little part of what we.
So as she said, I'm just going to kind of go over numbers. I'm a numbers person that I taught math for 16 years, I think. So I'd like to see it broken down. Every month we partner with Manna through the T-Fat Program, UNTA, to provide what are called T-Fat Boxes. We're providing about 160 T-Fat Boxes every month to community members' households. We're also providing emergency boxes. So with those totals, we are currently providing either emergency boxes or T-Fat to 207 households. And that equals about 509 individuals in this community. The T-Fat Program is income based, so you have to meet income eligibility rules to get food from that program. But then our emergency boxes are open to anybody. We don't discriminate against people who may or may not have what we consider the income to purchase food. They say they're hungry, we feed them. We are providing 1,200 approximately meals per month through our weekly meal, so again, that's not income based. Anybody can come, anybody can participate in that. They just have to come and say they want a meal. Actually, Michelle said we have partnered with the Healthy Opportunities Program and we are what is considered a health service organization. And through that, these are services that are provided to meet the social needs of community members, Medicaid members, who have what are considered social benefits in their lives. So those are things that socially impact them, that could then impact their physical health. So for example, if a Medicaid member or any member is living in a house where there's mold, we can expect that that would hurt their physical health. It would trigger asthma and phoshyema, COPD, allergies. If we have a community member who doesn't have access to reliable transportation, that we know within a whole area that that further impacts their social health as well as their physical health. And if he access needed services like doctors, church, you know, things that, grocery stores, things that then would impact their physical health. So I'm going to go over just some of the things that we haven't been able to do. And this is just tracking since July, okay? So these are just things that we've been able to do since July. Currently I have spent, I have spent $33,000 on what is called Healthy Home Goods since July. Those are things like refrigerators, stove, bedding, vacuum cleaners, weather filters, air filters, dehumidifiers, things that would allow clients to have a healthier physical environment so that again, their health is impacted positively. And the whole premise of this program is that when you do these things that impacts people's social health and their physical health, you're going to have a decrease in the amount of money that Medicaid is then going to have to expend because people are not going to access the ER. They're not having to access the doctors because their asthma's not triggered as much or their allergies or whatever, that you're able to prevent their use of Medicaid services without. We have spent $33,000 already through that Healthy Home Goods Program. That's typically through Amazon because I don't have an appliance store here. There's just not one here for me to be able to spend for those things. We have already spent, we have already spent $37,378 since July on transportation repairs. That is to the local community, that's to your local mechanics. We have repaired people's cars and that, that amount. So I mean, the economic impact just to Graham County to spend $37,000 with your local car stores, your local mechanics, that is a significant economic impact when you consider that. We have already spent through this program of $16,900 on utility bills. And those utility bills, some of them are to the town of Robbinsville and the water bill. Some of them are to do energy as winter approaches. I'm sure some of that is, we will have more utility referrals coming for propane, kerosene, those kinds of things. I currently have open referrals that I'll be paying in the next month, $7,555. And some of those are going to the town of Robbinsville in the form of hard payments, helping people catch up on past due amounts. It may be that it's paying deposits for people to be able to get their water hooked up on their power. We currently are working with 41 clients here in Robbinsville that are considered at risk for homelessness. So those are people who either don't have, they're living in campers or living in tents. Some of those families are living with other families. So I mean, I've got houses where I'm living, people, you've got three families living with us because there is no access to rainwater right now. I currently have $68,000 worth of transportation repairs that I'll be completing over the course of the next couple of months. That will be again, local mechanics. I think I've had maybe three girls that have actually moved to another county and that's just specific to their people. Right here in the community, $68,000. Into the hands of the people of the community over the next six months, we have $21,916 that will be paid out to funds as mileage reimbursement. It's so that people can get to their kids' ballgames, they can get to the grocery store, they can get to their church, they can get to community events and reduce, you know, those things. You can't participate in parent teacher conferences because you can't afford the gas. This would allow that to happen and it would allow people to be able to be more involved. The thing's then is that we provide 150 food boxes every week to 150 of our clients. And with that program, I spend at Walmart every week, five days a week, we go to Walmart, we pick up groceries. We are spending about $8,830 in shared container because that's where I have to go to get groceries. We can't do per side compared to our angles. That's not an option. I've done cross comparisons since, you know, I'm a numbers person. It's about 25 to 35% more expensive to purchase groceries out of angles than it is in just a mall. So I, to be able to give my clients the best access to healthy foods. And we provide fresh fruits, fresh vegetables, you know, protein, grains. So that calculates to about $431,000 a year that I'm spending just on that piece of the program.
In another county.
Yeah, in another county. And I mean, it breaks my heart because when I see 431,000, I'm thinking that if even just like a percentage of that went to have job openings, it had, you know, that's probably four or five employees that they would have to have, just they need a lot of work on a daily basis without being stocking and loading. I joke with the people at my feet all the time that I pay to their pickup center because I have spent that much money over the course of the last two and a half years that I tell them all the time, like, y'all, thank me every time I pull in, but I'm pretty sure this is like that. So it is significant. We spend $36,000 a year on client choice. We spend about $20,000 a year for the meals just to provide those. So that is a lot of buying power. And we're not here asking you to provide, we're not, what we're saying is we've got that buying power that could be used here in this community. And how can we partner together to say, yeah, just five points, spend it that much? You know, what can we do to get possibly more access? Graham County, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but Graham County is considered a food desert, which means that people don't have access to the foods, nutrition that they need to be able to live a healthier life. And when you look statistically, we're off the chart for the number of people with breathing related issues, cancer, diabetes, heart disease, all of these things that we are just toeing the line at the top every single year without at least the data. And so how can we, you know, partner with you guys and make sure that, that clients don't tell, I mean, and we're all on Facebook, we see it all the time, people complaining, you know, about not having access all the time. But how can we work together to maybe be able to spend even if it's 2%? I might have to leave 2% of that sales tax that I'm spending in the, you know, and not to mention the cost to my employees, the cost to my vehicle that, you know, where we have to sit around all right, five days a week with an employee and gas and wear hair on our vehicle, you know, all those things that then wouldn't be if we had somewhere closer to be able to purchase goods.
So that just kind of gives you a synopsis. And on top of all of that, we have been very fortunate in being able to also affect the economy in Graham County that we now have eleven employees, seven employees are full-time employees that are making a living wage in this community. We offer them a full benefit package as well. They're local people who are now working. We have people that are coming through the Recovery and Work Program that are involved or active users that are actually working, that are putting money back into your community, that are, that are living here in this community, that are buying their groceries here in this community. It doesn't sound like a lot, but I mean, when you stack the blocks together, it makes the difference. And I know that I shaved my head and noticed that we've here doing, some of you was older than I am even, but I can remember when my father retired and we came back to Robbinsville, we had five grocery stores here.
Five?
Five grocery stores here. I'm, I'm old, but I'm locked out, you know? And I think that we needed to have a voice and we want to see this money going to benefit our community, even when we might be able to get our tax back from this day. Part of it has to go to Cherokee County because that's where we make our purchases. We want to see that be able to stay in our community and help our people and do the projects that we know need to be done here. If there's anything that, some way that we can come together as a unit and see if we can make that happen, some way. We want you to know that we're, we're on board on that fight if you'll give us the votes.
I don't have a question for you on that, but I think we need to have this conversation.
Sure.
We need to choose some key players in the community to sit. So if you guys have folks in mind, get them to channel, have a board represent the county that, or that department will represent the county that's not having involved.
Yes, and perhaps, you know, we had hoped that Josh would have been able to have been here during this time. We could start with him and he could help us, lead us through who we need to be, the key players at the table. Well, because we, that's not our, that's not what we do. You know, so if he could help us with that, we certainly want to further that conversation.
We'll be sure he gets more of it too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right. Paul Lewis.
Mr. Chairman, it's good to see you here. See you. Doesn't people normally present from here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you hear me? You can get on the line if you want to.
Well, let's see if I don't want to hear you.
My thing is wrong with this, I'm with foundation forward, the charge of freedom. I'm local county manager, but for the last 10 years, I've gotten to grant from the early in the rest of the country to build a charge of freedom. Today's the first time I've laid eyes on yours in a long time. And quite frankly, I was impressed. Mr. Chairman, you or somebody has been cleaning it and maintaining it. It, it looks, it looks quite good compared to, to some that haven't appeared as well as yours. So thank you for that. What we're giving you or what we would like to give to your beautiful county, I had a three hour drive out here today and I need to spend more time in western North Carolina because that was a beautiful drive out from Warren into, to your county. And it reminds me of just how diversified North Carolina is from Irving to Mania. If you were to look at the map, you're actually closer from here to Chicago than you are to Mania. That's how, that's how big our North Carolina is across the state. I'm probably one of the very few people this year in time that can say that I've been to all 100 counties. We have built charges of freedom in 35 counties. We're under construction now in five counties. So I have 60 more to go to have a charge of freedom in all 100 counties across North Carolina. The reason we haven't already finished that task is because people around the country have discovered what we do. We now have over 60 nationwide in 12 different states. The last one that we dedicated out of the state was at the Reagan Library in California. What a beautiful, beautiful site. We're under construction right now at Jimmy Carter, at Jimmy Carter Library in Georgia, which shows that our foundation, regardless of which side of the aisle we fall on, we were nonpartisan. We work real hard to keep it that way. What we're giving to you tonight is called the Civil Rights Amendments. As Vance Patterson and I were presenting the charges of freedom across the country, we kept noticing a common theme. I'll give you an example of what happened in Union County, North Carolina. I was returning to a whole home day because I had been the county manager there for six years and knew most of the people that were on the board. And there was a young African-American council member. When I finished my presentation, he said, Mr. Lewis, you did a great job with your presentation, but you didn't do anything for me. I had to step back and listen to what he was saying because there's, there was a large portion of our population that don't like the foundation forward, wasn't meeting their needs. So we get back to our staff and we sit down around the conference table and put our heads together. And we discovered that the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th Amendments make us all the same. Regardless of the color of your skin or your gender, we're all Americans under the great Constitution in our great country. And we began to produce that. Now, we can't afford to go back and build another pedestal in all the locations that we have built around the country. So what we're gifting you tonight is a framed print of the Civil Rights Amendments to hang where you choose, Mr. Chairman, where you and the board would like to hang it. But it brings us all together in, in full circle. And we, we're, we're very pleased with that. Again, I visited your charges of freedom in San Fernando. I came a little early before your meeting. The only improvement that I would recommend would be some additional concrete. I asked your acting manager, current interim manager, if you had a concrete company within the county. And I, I think right now you don't, but I would be glad to see if I could get the concrete donated versus additional sidewalk. The only improvement that I would make to your charges of freedom, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for keeping it looking so good, but some additional sidewalk would, would be advantageous. But please accept our gift. And I also noticed that my visit, that the vault is not sealed. We need to finish that. And I will see how quickly that we can get that done, to seal the vault and put materials in there that you and the board and other officials might want to have placed into the vault. We will do that in the very near future and have that permanently sealed until, to our anniversary of the Constitution. But again, thank you for allowing me to be with you today.
It's beautiful. Appreciate it.
And we, we're very pleased to have been here. I, I want to apologize for taking me so long to get back here, but hopefully within the next three years, all 100 counties in North Carolina will have the charges of freedom. And again, please accept our gift and, and hang it where you would choose, Mr. Chairman.
We will find a good spot.
And there will be some other materials coming in the mail that will conclude our relationship with the, with the county. Thank you so much, sir, again for having me today.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Father, just thank you for this day that you've given us. And Father, we just ask for your understanding and your help for us, Father, to be able to carry out what we need to do. Father, we ask that just be it our families and be it our loved ones throughout our county, just continue each to kind of thing. Father, especially those who lost loved ones, we just ask that you would be able. Father, thank you for the blessings that you give, that you bestowed upon us and just continue just to bless us and just protect us. And thank you again for everything that you do and the precious and holy this man that you trust with him.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, our people can, under 12A, Al Thomas Menard, Recreation Director. And then under 16, I need Quitcock and Hasting, under GBD, UNO Business. And I do have a couple of things under the UNO Business that I'll write.
And I'll leave something.
Under 16 is going to be 16G.
Josh Conover, we'll be adding to number 17, one session. We'll privilege your confidence in the commission.
Father, we'd like to pray that the county management, especially the lady on July 21, the foundation lady on July 21, workshop leader and powers of the 20, regular lady on powers of the 20, and the change of your honor spell set.
Father.
One motion to the positive rating remains of the public carriage from the 53rd land capital transit and get through the transportation.
Master.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the, thank you for seeing us this evening. Uh I am the acting transit director right now. Thank you all. I would like to request permission to apply for the fifty-three ten admin grant for the Y twenty-six year and also the combined capital grant. Total for those two grants is a hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars with accounting match being twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Any questions?
Questions?
I am Elizabeth Chris. I'm the deputy director of the Grand County Speaker's Center. And I'm here to ask for me permission to apply for the fifty-three ten grants. And what that grant is just providing transportation to the elderly of Grand County and for disabled to go to the doctor or bring them to the senior center, build their groceries, go pick up some medicines. And the amount it is, let's see, it's ninety-four thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And the county would have to match nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Any questions? Sorry, one problem with certain. Right, fifty-three eleven, yeah, fifty-three. Not the public carriage, we have the regular.
I'm moved.
Fire it. Much improved, uh fifty-three eleven, captain transit program, it's fifty-three ten, send it to the point.
Okay, so as most of the youngs now leave the armed construction of the senior center and we're doing walk-in refrigerators and freezers, generators, we're getting new shelves, or I'm sorry, new storage buildings. And we have actually hit our max budget on the grant that we received, but we still need two additional items. We need our floors redone and then we need shelving for our units, our refrigerator freezer units. So, the estimated total, I'm sorry, um I don't have the exact total for the shelving, but we're going to estimate it at five thousand dollars. And the flooring, we have our quote on it, is nine thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. So, the total amount we need for those two items is fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. We do have some other money left. We have seven thousand twenty-five dollars left. So, we're still short somewhere around eight thousand dollars. I spoke to the AAA and they said they could potentially help us, but she hasn't gave me an amount or even said directly yes. But I would want to ask y'all if y'all would be willing to help us with that eight thousand dollars with the stipulation if we give money from the AAA that will go back to reimburse the county for the amount that they done.
Good evening. Last one that was here to request your help with a capital project we're doing that the Humane Society is putting in fencing. That amount was eight hundred and fifty dollars. Again, uh the capital expense required by an inspection of one three hundred millimeter of agriculture, their animal welfare section. But tonight, what I'd like to do is continue with our collaborative effort to help you take stray animals to all the streets in our world. And for that to happen, obviously, it takes money. So, for we take in over the year for twenty twenty-three and so far this year, of all the animals we take in, fifteen percent comes from this county. We obviously deal with Clay County insurance. Fifteen percent of those animals are from here. Whenever anybody comes to drop off an animal, we get their driver's license and their address. So, that's how we keep up with the county of the animals coming. But I will tell you, for us, just a few items that we have to enable us to keep these animals, even though we are generally a no-go shelter, last year we euthanized eighty animals. So, if they come in severely injured or if they're very aggressive bite animals, we will euthanize them. So, for employees, insurances, building maintenance utilities, animal expense, and vet expense, then we operate at a little over a million dollars. Obviously, a lot of that comes from uh three, a lot of it comes from donations, some of it comes from the counties. As far as you folks, if you figure out fifteen percent of our operating costs, that's a hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars. That enables us to take care of those animals coming from Grand County. Right now, your payment is twenty thousand, which is thirteen percent of the hundred fifty-three thousand. We would ask that you rein for us to go back to what you were paying us before. That was about fifty-one thousand a year. That certainly helps our mission of saving these animals. If you uh that is like a sixty-one percent cut to what you've given us before. And of course, that puts a strain on our finances. If you want to, we would ask that, again, we'd like to continue this collaborative effort. In doing that, we need a contract. So, we would like to institute a contract. We have an old charity account and we need to update that. We'd like to have a contract with Grand County and we have to have one with Clay County as well. So, I would like to press forward that if you folks are willing to do that. But on the other hand, if you would like to open your own shelter and take care of your own stray animals, there's a few things that you have to do. You have to comply with the North Carolina Department of Ag and the Welfare Section. And I don't know if you've looked at the this inspection check, this three pages long. So, what you have to do to have a licensed shelter. And some of those things are, obviously, you need a building, need indoor and outdoor kennels. Every animal has to have about eight square feet of space. Uh you have to have a building no cooler than fifty degrees, no warmer than eighty-five degrees. So, you have to have a climate control. You have to have hot water, hot and cold water. You have to feed animals once every twenty-four hours if they're over six months. If they're less than six months, you have to feed them twice. You can't put young animals, six months or younger, with adult animals. So, they have to have separate quarters. Whatever kennel you'd have inside has to be, the floor must uh impervious to moisture, so you can clean it. And one kennel can't leak into the next kennel. You have to attach all that to a sanitary wastewater treatment system. You have to have uh obviously smoke fire and carbon dioxide alarms in the building. And you have to have one person per every ten animals that you have, that's cats and dogs. We generally have a hundred and fifty dollars on any point in time and around a hundred cats. And that number never changes. We ship animals up to probably once a month, sometimes twice a month. We carry animals up to Asheville through a transport alliance and they go into Canada and the northeast. We take thirty-five or forty animals up there. I can tell you, within two weeks, that thirty-five or forty are back. It's like me pulling my hand out of a bucket of water. There's no hole, but it just fills back in. People dump puppies at the front gate. All our puppies that we get in are sick. They all have parvovirus. Some die before we treat them. You also have to have a euthanized certified individual and you have to have a vet. So, that's just a very few of the things that you would have to have if you want to open all the shelter, take care of your own strays. I know that Macon County has their own shelter. Their budget's four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Hallwell County has their own. It's one point four million. So, for us, that's just a little over a million dollars. Most of it comes from donations. But again, we still need your help to do this. And we, uh Clay County's own, we need Charity County's own. We have big projects we have to do. The fence was blown, again, required by North Carolina airport. So, you can't have animals in temporary kennels outside. Every animal has to go outside for fifteen minutes a day. This is a state sentence for enrichment. You have to have people to do that. So, again, I would ask for your help, us continuing on mission of taking care of the animals. I know no one will ever have a leash law. I understand how difficult that would be to enforce. And if folks aren't going to do the right thing and neuter their animals, then this is going to keep happening. It's not going to stop. So, we try very hard to farm out our animals to the northeast and Canada. But again, it just, it never ends. So, again, I'm asking you for your help. I would appreciate it if you go back to what you were paying us before. It's very difficult to not have that. Again, we'd like to have a contract with the county just for that. Any questions for me alone? I think it's an old one. It needs to be updated.
How how much is your item regarding what you saw in the images?
You know, that's really hard to say because uh.
Insurance fluctuates.
It fluctuates terribly. I will tell you, one of our fence projects, around one of our buildings, the newest building on the property, the fence put in was too low, oh, forty-five, that's the final one. We had a donor come and pay for that fence, which was over ten grand. We've gotten so many for the earthquake fence project, but I really can't give you the value. Well, I can tell you, one point two million is essentially where our budget is for the year. Folks are twenty grand. Probably uh seventy-five or seventy donations. And we do write grants. We're trying. There are specific grants out there for five one C three, the animal shelters. We have applied for those. As you know, writing grants, it can take a while to have results. We tried. There are also grants for, one of our biggest causes, animal food. We've applied for grants, but there are certain organizations out there that are helping with that. But again, it just takes a while for those grants to come to fruition. Thank you for mentioning it.
Good afternoon. Uh I'm Donna Stevens, the internal health director for the county. Um the first thing I want to address this afternoon with the commissioners is a fee schedule. Since we've started operating the clinic, we have um increased our services and the items on the fee schedule request for things that we have not provided in the past. So, we need that approved so that we can legally bill for those. I think I handed everybody a call. Here my daddy Michael. Yes. Those are what's allowed by the state for us to bill insurance companies. We just needed approval for our fee schedule.
Do you have any weapons about the truth?
An example of the the demand medicine services. Some of the things you cover there, you're.
We're sitting. Is that like our counseling or something?
I think you will. The second thing I want to address is um we've kind of shortened on the opioid settlement strategic money from last year. As y'all know, we uh had a strategic planning committee facilitated by Heather Gates. We brought that to the board June fourteenth for approval with her recommendations for the strategic planning of the opioid settlement. That was approved at the Board of Commissioners meeting on the fourteenth of June two thousand twenty-three. After that was approved, we received an invoice the first of December from HITS. HITS provides services um at the school for social workers to help children that has been identified in need uh of substance abuse counseling, also the after-school program. And we paid that money out, forty-five thousand dollars, to later find out that we didn't meet the Department of Justice requirements. I'm saying that great honor, Stacy. Yeah. Yes. So, we had paid that money and HITS uh was asked to reimburse, but they would not reimburse. They had done a cash, the check and spin it for the staff of the school. We did get ten thousand back that the school had not cashed for the after-school program. So, thus, this is costing the county or Health Department thirty-five thousand dollars to be short. None of this is Health Department related. All this money went to HITS for services at the school. I'm asking the county to absorb that thirty-five thousand dollars. If you don't, it will cost men employed. We have an open position. I've met with Stacy and Kim. The only way the Health Department can cover that loss of the opioid money is if we had a position. With the clinic running, I only have one medical office assistant. She checks inpatients, brings them back, does their vital signs, waits, and takes them to the doctors. Without that position, then we're one of the shortest down member that's critically needed. So, I'm asking the county, since it's not a Health Department position, as far as the opioid settlement, that's a county position. It's really not for the Health Department to absorb that money out of our budget. So, I'm asking that the commissioners would absorb that in the county funding since it's related to opioid and nothing to do with the Health Department.
Give us some time to get.
Okay. Then the last thing that I have is um on behalf of the staff at the Health Department, our round's been pretty low this year. Uh staff didn't get a merit raise. And from what I understand, the merit raise hasn't been given since two thousand twenty-one. Staff would like for me to present to the Board of Commissioners to ask if y'all would consider giving back the um one week pay vacation, or not vacation, sorry, holidays for July fourth and a week for Christmas, the way it was in the past. That would be an increase of five days per year that staff would be able to give. They didn't think that was too much to add since there's not been any merits or recognition for the past four years.
Some time to to discuss what you're asking, but thank you for giving us information. And I'm sure we'll be sticking with each other and serve those things.
I want to show you all the others.
Your opinions on can you ask the work and as they get down the page, we'll have to get the labels on and bring it to the board. The hallway plus the power.
Thank you.
Meda Holder.
Good evening commissioners. My name is Anita Holder and I'm at home at three six seven Stacoa Yat Road and a part owner of Landwall Highway twenty eight in Stacoa along the current path of corridor K, the last phase. So I'm gonna start with the good news first. I may be the only person in this room tonight who's not here to ask me for my news. But my purpose for being here is to learn why commissioners were and are in support of a planned multi-use walking and bicycle path along Highway twenty eight in Stacoa as part of that final phase of corridor K. So tonight when I use the term path, I'm talking about the multi-use path. I support encouraging walking, hiking, bicycling, anything outdoors that legitimately promotes the health of the citizens in this county. We heard some of the names for that here tonight. But this path, because of its location, accomplishes none of that. Or if it does, it's for a very select few people. So before corridor K construction began, NC DOT asked for public input on phases and location of the proposed routes. At that time, I, many others, I'm sure all of you, saw the drawings that were posted inside the county. My father and I observed plans and saw the proposed path at that time. We both voiced our opposition to it, to NC DOT personnel as an unwarranted and wasteful use of taxpayer dollars. I've since been told, but I have not personally verified this, so I'm just repeating what I have been told. That before the plan was finalized, that another affected Stacoa resident on Highway twenty eight submitted a signed petition to the state to not have a path in the final plans, but that information was disregarded before the plan was finalized. Since learning a few months ago that the path is supposedly now funded, I asked NC DOT what determined that the path would be kept in the final plan. And I was originally told that it was public inputs that drove the decision. So I asked for public records from the county, thank you Ms. Chris, and the state that could document community response. And I found no responses written about that path, except the one I'll tell you about later. So upon finding a legitimate proof that public input had created the demand, NC DOT later let me know by email that the reason for the decision was driven by studies, analysis and policy. So on August twentieth, I asked the state to produce their studies, analysis and policies that drove the decision. And as of today, I still don't have an answer from the state. So the only thing I found in using public records is commissioner meeting notes from here from March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Commissioner Cody stated, quote, "People in Stacoa are asking more bike lane and sidewalks," end quote. And that he had reached out to Brian Birch, who's with NC DOT, to see if it was doable. I've got the notes, you can look at the whole thing, but I'm summarizing here. So as of now, the state plans to not only build a sidewalk approximately a third, maybe a half a mile long, but it's a sidewalk that doesn't connect anything to anything. It's literally a sidewalk to nowhere, will be like St. Louis County in that regard. And it's alongside a state highway where increasing traffic lanes, where motorcyclists and car club drivers frequently increase their driving speeds on that section of road. So not only does the state plan to add the path, they also plan to create a temporary walking path while construction occurs. Now, assuming that every person in this room has been through a construction zone while corridor K has been going on. Can you imagine having a temporary walking path along any part of that? I looked today on my way over the mountains. I wouldn't let anybody walk alongside that kind of equipment. Would you walk on it while construction's occurring? Especially in Stacoa where no such path ever existed before, the temporary one is nonsense. None of this makes sense. So since we found out that the funding supposedly was approved, one business owner created another petition and gathered hundreds of signatures again in opposition to that path at that location. So in closing, I just want to summarize three concerns. I have many, but I'll keep it three. And I would like to leave here with at least one answer. The first issue is a safety one. We're blessed to have miles and miles of hiking trails here and a beautiful walking path that's equal about the center. It defies logic that anyone would design a pedestrian path along a busy highway, especially when we're getting ready to light it. So now, I did find one email that spoke to a safety issue from the state. And they asked designers to consider a split rail fence as on the creek side of the wall as opposed to a metal one, because it was aesthetically pleasing. But supposedly the purpose of that side of the rail will be to keep future walkers from falling down the bank and into the creek. Safety and it's very vast. So my second concern is a stewardship one. Just because that money is available doesn't mean it should be spent. Our country's over thirty five trillion in debt and counting and gear ribbon building sidewalks to nowhere. So we can't be accountable locally for being wise with our spend and how in the world would we ever expect it DC fixed? Now, the state clearly pays attention if the commissioners say that you want something, you want them to act on it. So I'm not asking you for money tonight, I'm asking you to intervene on that wasteful spending. So finally and foremost is the transparency issue. Multiple residents of Stacoa were and still are in opposition to this path, but that public input was ignored. No records that I can find that shows support for it other than the one that I've mentioned. So why were the citizens ignored and continue to be ignored now? And who were the walkers who reportedly asked for the path? Commissioner Cody, with all due respect, you're the only person I can identify through records who can answer that. And I would like an answer. Who are we building the path for?
Walkers just actually walking down Highway twenty eight. They actually walk around Stacoa Road, riding bicycles down Stacoa Road. And they go around High Town Road. And I asked Brian Birch to see if we could get a sidewalk built for a bike lane for those kids and those adults walking in the afternoons for exercise. They do walk into the trail over there, but they have a lot of them walk to the front. A lot of them ride to the trail on their bicycles. And they come by the house constantly.
They are on High Town Road and they are on other parts of the road, but typically we never see folks walking on Highway twenty eight because it is dangerous.
There's people right, there's people walk on Highway, Highway twenty eight. Me, myself, I've done it in the past. They've been uh police officers training, running the road down through there. There've been bicyclists coming up to there constantly. There's one boy that actually rides for long. To this day, he rides for twenty eight to go to the drive thru.
We do have a few cyclists in that area. I would see them on Lower Stacoa Road, and we do. But from a cycling standpoint, to go back and forth on a third mile stretch, turn around and go back and forth and back and forth.
Supposed to tie into to High Town Road to make a loop.
To make a loop where there are no sidewalks along there for people to walk. And by the way, and I will not extend this, I don't have our speakers, but I have reviewed the comprehensive transportation plan from two thousand and fifteen, the gateway to tomorrow plan from two thousand and fifteen, the Robbinsville pedestrian connectivity plan in two thousand and thirteen, and parts of the two thousand and thirteen walk hike NC. Excuse me, Greg says no pedestrian or bicycle plans are proposed for Gray County. And I will ask that you go back and look at that plan and see if that is a wise use of taxpayer dollars.
Anita, could I ask you one question?
Certainly.
Your request uh from the study and the analysis that you have not had a response on approximately how long you have.
So that was August twentieth. And so I did get an automated response saying that they had sent it to the person who was supposed to deliver it, but I haven't. I think he does, and he did tell me, if you'll allow me, he would like to hold a barrel racing event on October the fifth. Um, the insurance clause, I think, came in around three hundred dollars, but that has been donated for the extra insurance like we give for volleyball or baseball. This, we always do an extra. Uh, we will have concessions and games, so we'll make a little bit of money though. It's from five years to however whoever wants to guide a horse. A barrel racing. But he just wanted permission to have that event on October the fifth. It's just about that. Yes, and it's going to be El Bagger and Canyon Recreation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening commissioners, good evening everyone. I'll go over the project manager's report, which you should have in front of you on the table. Starting off with item one, that's the new justice center. Been no change with that project at least for now, so I'll move on to the next couple, three projects. And those three, there are CDVG that I'll report on or I'll cover on the slide, the PowerPoint slide that I have up on the screen. And for those that haven't been up in the meeting and seen it, this is our agenda that we're gonna go over. We did two homes on, under the home reconstruction or neighborhood revitalization on seven oh eight Mountain Creek and two nine seven Copetown Lane. For the coronavirus CDVG grant responsive fairness, we are doing an expansion at our senior center on West Ford Hill. Then at the end, we'll go over a brief summary of the project and take any questions you have. Obviously, the CDVG project or grant funding is basically a public, a state funded grant funds that go towards communities and and persons that are economic, have less economic opportunity and principal person's a low mager. So that's, that was our target for trying to do these projects that we put together through the county and that help with the state. Little orientation for projects as we go forward, obviously seven oh eight Mountain Creek. And wonderful job on these projects. I'd have to say the families are ecstatic and very satisfied. I'll, I'll go through the slides. Basically, the projects are complete. I didn't have a chance to, we finished them last month, but I didn't have a chance to show the completion of the projects. A lot of the outside, I had already seen some pictures, you have seen some of those. But I added more slides to kind of give you an idea of what we did in the interior of homes. So a couple of each side shots of the elevation of the home on seven oh eight Mountain Creek. Showing kind of the overhead power and the finish um through each side of the facility. It was uh, project was done with a good contractor and uh did it definitely in a good timeframe as well too. Here's some of the photos that we haven't had a chance to show. We have a living room photo that shows vinyl flooring throughout the facility with sheet rock and paint with wood trim finishes throughout. And your finished kitchen on the right side, furnished appliances throughout as well. Master bath with fixtures, again with sheet rock finish flooring, master bedroom on the right. A larger steel closet, not a walk-in, but as close as you can get to being one without me. Bedroom one on the left, bedroom two on the right, again with the same finishes. So three bedroom, two bath house, the second bathroom. In between, bedroom one and two on the left with the utility room. All appliances and fixtures provided. Move on to two nine seven Copetown. It's basically the same home, but obviously there was some difference in um the lock that was built on and we were able to provide options for the homeowners to choose from. You'll see those on the interior. There was the siding was a little different, obviously. Shingles were a little bit different colored, hard to tell in the photos. Sits well on both sides, still left plenty of room to get around the facilities and ended up being a good project. So with two nine seven, you can see the difference, there's some color differences. The flooring, it doesn't look different, but it was a different choice with the flooring and obviously the kitchen cabinets. Different colors um with the master bathroom on the left and the master bedroom on the right. Different fixtures, a little bit difference, fixtures to go for each different house. Again, different wall color, a little different flooring. The flooring was really close to being the same, but it is a little different. And the second ba- bathroom on the left with the toilet on the left. And again, those are our two CDVG homes that are complete. Project turned out really nice and we are working on more. There's a couple more bids that we're gonna be looking at doing for two other CDVG homes in the county. Working with our housing rehab specialists to get those bids out as soon as possible. Again, keep in mind that we're, we're dealing with costs, as everybody knows, it's been talked about with groceries. Building materials is also expensive, so hoping to be able to build two, just don't know if that's gonna be possible. We'll at least be able to see what we can do with the more grant money that we have. So the senior center, getting real close to being done with that, a couple of long lead items. Delayed us a little bit, but we're real close to being complete. So as you know, we moved, we moved the three compartments, which is on the left, to this new location. Um, and where it, where it used to be there was the small um four wheeled freezer and refrigerator units that sat in that, that little area. That was all the cooler and freezing room that they had. We, we put in a new walk-in unit to help also with our, our feeding with the um needles on wheels and the gel inmates that get fed from this facility. This is the entryway into that, that used to be where the sinks sound. It actually opened up room into the kitchen facility as well. You can see where the sink used to be, now they have that, that wall space that they can use to do some rearranging in the kitchen and the area to get to. The first box is the refrigerator. As you can see, the size of the refrigerator, more than probably triples what they had just along that small wall. Once, once you walk into the, the cooler area, turn left and goes into another large apartment, which is actually more freezer room than they did cooler room, which is what they need. Get more pictures of that once we get the electrical turned on, which is one of the reasons why it was a delay and a delay for the unit. Moved to the outside portion of the facility, as you can see what it would look like as you pull up on the east elevation. See, there's also a, an entry on this end of the building or the unit to be able to stock it where they don't have to walk in and out through the kitchen area. They can just come unload, take the dolly and then go right into the, the cooler and the freezer. On the right side, just past the cone, you can see the footers that have been placed for the shed. There's also a new dry wood storage shed, well, probably three times the size of what they had that will be placed on. Those footers are secured down. That's in about a three week timeframe to complete the electrical panel. As you can see, the bright side photo shows um the more blown up version further away. The awning is a new part over the door to the left of the freezer unit. That was part of the new construction to kind of help have some coverage when they walk out to go into the new storage unit. So the electrical panel in between the two outside units you see on the right was a special made panel to go with this unit. We had to wait to get it made, it's due next week. We'll kick off the units. The following week, we should get the, the storage unit and that should complete the contract. So about three weeks out from completion. And the summary, as you know, we're complete on seven oh eight. It was done in August and so was two nine seven as well, done in August, hundred percent complete. The storage containers are all gone from the sites. All, everything's been taken care of administratively, except for we. All, everything's been taken care of administrative wise, except for we, uh, we were approached by the Commerce to, to, they had some more money, so we're helping with it. Both sites doing a little more gravel on the road and improvements to two nine seven's water problem. They have their gravity water or spring. And they, what, there was enough to, for them to make it. We felt like we could do better. And because Commerce had a little bit more money, we went back to them, had a pump put in and it more than helped their water problem too. So that was, we're glad that we'll be able to fix that where they wouldn't have any water issue, other than obviously a gravity or drought issues that we really have. Glad to be able to do that. And then lastly, as you see, we're about eighty percent complete with senior center. Estimated that completion in October. There are no questions or comments. Takes us through item four on the project manager list. Item five is the high school, Big Oak Stadium, the home. Side, do redoing that side of the stadium for new bleachers. According to design and the bid documents, it's about fifty-nine, right? At sixty percent complete. I did receive an email after requesting, uh, they had some bid dates. Looking at the pre-bid into first of October and mid-October doing bid. Also need to get an engineering estimate. To try and get to the Commissioners and the school, let them know how much, what kind of cost they're looking at. There is a needs-based grant that, uh, they, that the architect and engineer mentioned. What we may try and do to get submit, working with the school submit. If you get a little help with the funding, we get the stadium finished. And still trying to track that as by July, completion by July of next year. Item six is the jail, uh, hazmat remediation. We did do a mandatory pre-bid conference. Three contractors did show up, so I'm optimistic that we'll have three bids and that is scheduled a bid on the twenty-fourth. Due in our, our files was today. I had an issue, I've already issued two amendments for the project. So hopefully that satisfied questions. I haven't received any archives by the deadline today. Um, we would entertain it just to be sure we get contractors, because we'd like to get this bid and get it in front of the Commissioners to see what the cost is gonna be. But we're optimistic we're gonna get three bidders on the twenty-fourth. Last project is the EMS-based paving project. I provided a rough engineer's estimate to with the project. This kind of goes along with, it's a little bit higher than what my initial estimate is, not too much higher. He's about ninety percent complete with the, the designing bid, um, bid documents. Potentially go out the bid at the end of the month or the first of October. The other is project development. As you see, number eight, which I've provided in a capital, cap, my capital outline, projects for the year. Like that's a project we're gonna be needing to look at in the near future sanitation. Unless there's any questions or comments, that's all I want.
You should have a copy of the financial report, pardon me. Now we'll go through it as quickly as possible if you have any questions. And the first, this is for the, the period ending eight thirty-one, twenty-four. And it's using those balances, our unrestricted accounts and fund balances is four million, eight hundred and eight thousand, twenty dollars and five cents. And above that, we have appropriated fund balances and those are listed there for you, that they call appropriate fund balances. It's five hundred and nine, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and five cents. And we do have our restricted funds account balances. Each one of those accounts is listed along with their, um, with their balances. So our total restricted funds is twelve million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. They are, our income per the books for this month was nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our expenditures, um, for this month is two million, ninety-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Our tax collections, this is provided to us from the Real Ops Report provided by the Tax Collector's Office. Our current year collections for this month were five hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighteen cents. And our prior year collections were forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. So our total tax collections were five hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. And our collection rate for this new tax year, um, is fifteen point eight eight percent to date. As far as our DMV and our BTS collections, and for this month, we collected sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and six cents. Our sales business collection, which excludes the quarter cent sales tax, which is set aside, and for this month, and it's actually, um, collections for July twenty twenty-four and it's paid in September, we just received it, it's three hundred and three thousand, seven five dollars and forty-eight cents. And other than the quarter cent sales tax, um, thirty thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. And that is being reflected. So just a few notes, um, from, from the finance office and fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four audit work is continuing. We're continuing to have, um, weekly meetings with NCA State Consultant along with our CPA that we're working with in addition to LG State that we meet with. And our auditors are planning to review all that information in the summer January timeframe. And we are preparing to have those visitors ready for the revenue at that time. And we do have a company way of those that was part of the regular scheduled visits. And so that will be occurring. As far as grant updates, and we've been working on the opioid report that's due at the end of this month. I've been working with Tonya Snyder. And, um, the sending winners has been with the X-Team. We are getting all of that information reported in correctly. And we do have the, our, our deadline for expenditures is the end of this, um, calendar year. So we are working on gathering all of this to the information that has to be resonated, um, for those projects. That way we don't have to revert all of those funds. And I do have a meeting with NCA State, um, with their, our expert team, just to know we'll check out all of, everything is in compliance and we don't have any issues. And as far as amendments are concerned, um, I have two options for you on the amendments. And, and this is to kind of help resolve, and I'll, I'll start at the beginning and start drawing first. And so the number one item on the, um, on the amendment, this will be amendment number two for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So my opioid settlement spend budget, um, was brought in incorrectly at the time of the budget. And this just was due to the fact that some dogwood health trust grant funds were commingled into that amount. And, um, the expenditure resolution balances weren't used from the end of last fiscal year moving into this fiscal year. But because I have to, I would pass, I have a copy for you. I would, I would, I want to give you two because I want to. Um, so, um, the first part of the amendment is to correct, is to get the opioid settlement funds, um, department back to where it's supposed to be. So we had the first resolution in place that's worth a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. We had spent twenty-one thousand dollars and some change of that money, so what should have been brought forward was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So just to get those buckets cleaned back up, we had to add something back to this amendment. Then, um, the second piece of this amendment is where we had the, uh, resolution number one, where we had a new new resolution that superseded the previous resolution. So in order to add those funds, that was an additional seventy thousand dollars that was approved, um, to get added into that resolution. So we had to pull those current funds out to opioid settlement accounts, put those into the general accounts, for therefore a budget amendment that was necessary for that as well. Um, then the next piece of that was we received some special funding opportunity through DHHS. And we needed to add those funds on both the revenue side and expenditure side. So there was that on the amendment. Then in addition, um, so in, in identifying the issues with the opioid settlement funds department, we also identified some issues with the department, um, the dogwood health trust grants. So the revenue side was budgeted correctly, but the expenditure side was not budgeted correctly due to the fact that it was only going to be opioid funds. So there was a shortfall, um, of seventy thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. So they did have some revenue that was received that was not budgeted into the current budget of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So that helped us recoup that amount. Um, and so now there's a shortfall of forty-seven thousand, hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents. And Donna had spoken a little bit to this account. And so we have two options. Um, the two, the one option that she had said would be to not rehire the medical assistant position. And then that would be a savings of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighteen cents, which would cover the shortfall. That would be option A. And option B, um, she did have, um, a, uh, a provider that moved from being an employee to move to contracted services. So being able to take those funds out of salaries and move that to contracted services, that was going to cause the savings on the FICA insurance and also on the retirement side. So that would actually recoup us thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, which brings that deficit down to just twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents. But then, since we haven't had a medical assistant in place for the last three months, third of July, August, and now September, we do have that savings, which would give us all of the rest of that offset amount that we're getting. So that would be option B and being able to clean up the, so we'd have opioid completely cleaned up and then that would also get dogwood health trust completely cleaned up. So I have two options to, to present. You know, I have, I have amendments prepared both ways, just depending on which way you guys plan as far as to resolve that situation. Um, so I'll let you think about that for a second.
So either do not rehire the physician.
Yes.
Or we can save money, not having to solve it. For the ones.
And then provider. Yes, that's our provider move to the contracted services instead of being. So that would take English House savings on FICA, insurance and retirement. That would help us feel to offset. Choose option A, you don't have a position. Choose option B, you do have a position.
Position with, with, with the solvency.
Yes. My main position. And then just a few wise items that are included in this amendment. Uh, the first changes to the sanitation budget. Um, this was, this will change the salary spike and retirement lines, and this is due to the addition of the annual control fees. Um, the next item would be the recreation budget, it would change due to appoint Thomas Norr as the new director, so we have some changes there. Um, and then the building inspection budget would change due to moving Thomas Norr out of building inspections to good recreation. So we're shifting those funds. Um, and then, um, like I said, the provider moving from an employee to contracted services, there's that change in the page there. And then the due prices grant funds that the SS receives, um, there was new revenue, um, that needed to be recognized in a little bit of the account plan that was there. And so that's included in these as well. But I do have a couple of these options that I'll pass out to all of you. But that is what is included in amendment two. So just to summarize, um, amendment two, um, as far as appropriations that need to be changed on the expenditure side, we are decreasing it three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents on one side, but we're increasing the other side by four hundred and twenty thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents. But we are bringing in additional revenue to, to offset that amount. So, um, I will pass out copies of these amendments for people and then if there's a follow-up, I'll call you for the rest of the time. Um, and I do have one other. So a lot, kind of, a lot of information in one minute.
Next. Anybody else? Well.
Update on the project on checkups. Since our last meeting, we've only had one. And so part of the pay is doing the job and just, I was pretty diligent and watching those checks as they come through, it's, it's saying it's a work. So just wanted to provide an update on that. Then we have the, um, uh, resolution to reimburse expenses that we got through in a special way. I do have that, I just a copy of that resolution for you to give. And then I'll have the, um, resolution to pass around and it's big signs. But this wasn't through in a special way. That's all I have.
Hello, can you make?
Long one.
Well, let's read again. I am here to request my public records request that I requested back in May. I attended the meeting in July and Connie reassured me that I would be receiving my documents. And to this day, I've only received one fourth of the rest and one fifth of the documents that I requested back in May. Then I requested them again back in July and I've still not received what I requested. And you'll see on notice on page two of the, uh, handout that I gave you, that I may bring a civil lawsuit against the county. But I don't want to have to do that and give you this information that I can give us to do a civil suit against the county. Could somebody please give me a timeline of when I Could somebody please give me a timeline of when I'll be receiving this information? This has been since May, June, July, August, and September, or four months into this.
Kim's working on a, I know Kim and I called about it. And we have produced some, uh, not all, looking for questions. Just get to it, assume it's Kim.
I mean.
It would probably, my estimate, I think, coming to be very, this is probably the table. Two hours working the morning, probably three, four straight days, eight hour days to get a hair for Mr. Jackson.
No, Jake, I beg to differ with you.
Uh, and you don't just snatch, knock them outside of the file and hand it over. You've got to analyze it, you've got to see the segments to it, you've got to connect. Uh, you've got to respect confidentiality, there's, there are things that are clear and valid that if you're trying to load. And then, um.
Everything that I requested is falls under a general statute one thirty-two. I'm asking for financial documents for the expenditures and the revenues for, uh, year ending twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, and up to present day now, since we can't get the information I requested. I mean, I requested Monday just the check register for the month of August of this year, August of twenty-twenty-four. All that should be is a click of a button. Put in August first to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the general ledger, the expenditures. Should have gone back to Danny. No, I did not. I did not receive anything pertaining to that today.
And you didn't have from Katie Beasley?
No, Katie Beasley said she sent that on to the finance department.
Okay.
No.
I'll check on that.
We will, we will lay down the sign of our counsel as soon as, as soon as Jay's, as soon as Jay can have nothing to tell. They'll cooperate to it.
I know what is confidential and what can be released and what cannot be released. Everything I requested can be released.
As soon as the Jayler files that and what was, as you know, you saw that Jay was scared of something. With him and having as much of a doubt as possible. I mean, we're going to keep rocks and all, no?
Oh, I don't know if that's for overnight. This has been four months, Jake. I'm not.
Okay, so they're going to combine the fire department and the rescue squad. It used to be leased, I think it's in your packets. And it was actually to the, um, our, to the rescue squad. It needs to be the lease needs to say goes to fire department. So they can get grants and, and, uh, Jeff Mills says he can too. And the, the original leases for a hundred years. I think there's somewhat, it was done in nineteen sixty-four. So, um.
The order's changed to like a different lease.
Yeah, we just need a motion to, uh, I guess.
Two thousand and pensions on Charlotte. Part of team thinking. I think it's the beginning, I think it will last three hundred and fifty dollars, I think.
You shouldn't have lain this, yeah.
Now, Charlotte.
Thank you. It's not in your policy. It should be number four. It was to be a number. Yeah, yes, they were all given with numbers to identify or the last part of the bands.
The air, the air balloon before. Chris Thompson. Four thousand and twenty-seven dollars, not a big difference. They belong to three. Twenty-five dollars, six. They're the one and two. Even five dollars. Seven, six cents. They gave me one for six. Thank you. The students, I love. Roll back to the three, I'll watch. Why? Three, Thomas.
One thousand one.
Is that number six? Six. Two thousand, different, Charlie. Two thousand, sixteen, one. And two thousand, seven, Charlotte, three, eight, four. Two dollars. Four, the main day. We intercepted. I had a bigger four dollars. We made a three minute, one minute, six minute.
All right.
Motion. The blue parents. We've got Paul's on eight twenty-three, we got a. Paul on four, Paul on six, Paul on seven, Paul on eight. Paul on eleven, make better reservation for supporting the way we make this case, but she's got very big problems. And one regular volunteer, folks, that were hard to get, they're bringing in. So I put a ball in and I did a security on there. Eighty-nine donation from Asia, this is follow, items from traffic, eighty-nine donation, two hundred and seven thousand three hundred dollars. Can we ring clearing? I'll show you eighty-nine donation, two hundred and two thousand fifty dollars. And eleven probably acting of a big customer nation, one three seven three thousand seven hundred dollars. So here you go off. Paul, I was on him and he moved. There you go.
Yes. Okay, so I have brought to you, um, an employee that had, we had, there was an error in the NCA's uh, North Carolina retirement benefits back in the, um, I think we had paid previously paid fifteen thousand eight oh five fifty-two. That was in error. The North Carolina, uh, home retirement plans came back and said that there was a miss in one point nine one sixty-six years besides the fifteen. And that remaining balance is five thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Branson County owes and, um, five thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. In addition, we've already paid the fifteen. I was old, I see that. Yeah. Urgent care will be opening October the ninth. So that is our, um, date that we received, the October the ninth. That call came in today. Yep, and you're welcome. Wanted to call to let us know. Yes.
Yeah, the whole levels I've already, I've got it.
Yeah, it was that. And then one other thing, um, you are not into the IOI industrial, it's fifty years, kind of celebrate service with them. If you didn't get one of these cards in your packets, I have an extra one. So, uh, they're encouraging the commissioners to drop by October four from eleven-thirty to two. And if you haven't ever been, it will, it will absolutely please you to, uh, I think that is all for the moment.
Save your day in the first place. It was a great thing and thanks to the saving crew, the brothers, everything you call it together. And I, I enjoyed it and I know that it's the old days when you're, I can say the old days.
What else?
But I was really impressed. I mean, they had a lot of fan and dancing going on. I mean, it was, it was really.
There was over seven hundred people there and most of them were seniors, senior citizens. Uh, but it was, it was very impressive. That was my first time attending. And I encourage you to attend next year if it was possible.
It's great. I didn't go to see her at the end. And you end up celebrating with employees, whether you plan to or not, it's, it's great fun.
Just say it.